Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Before we get started, I just wanted to take a few minutes, if we could do a moment of silence for Porter. We lost Porter a couple of weeks ago due to cancer. So if we could just send our condolences to his family and friends, that'd be great. Thank you. We are now going to move to our consent agenda. Is there any piece of the consent agenda that you would like removed at this time before we vote on all of it? Mr. Hellcraft? Are you good with all three?
Can I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes of October 10th, 2023, and November 3, 2023, the approval of payroll and warrants, and the out-of-state field trip request Amica Pavilion, Providence, Rhode Island?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Ms. Codera?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Hellcraft?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving now, there is no delegation, no one signed up for delegation, so we are going to move to new business, the superintendent's report, Dr. Bailey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I get started, would you mind if I took things out of order? I'd like to start tonight with the Ford Middle School curriculum highlights, as we have many students with us tonight. And if I could call Mrs. Sylvia up to the podium, the principal, she will be introducing the students. But they are going to be discussing Responsive Classroom and the other student ambassadors. And as you know, we've had that program running at the elementary school, and it seems to be a big hit this year at the Ford Middle School. We have many of our leaders, student leaders who are ambassadors, who would like to have access to them. So you go ahead and listen to us tonight.
Welcome.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Mrs. Gomes, members of the school committee, Dr. Bailey, thank you for letting us switch it up. Have a quick little presentation. You all may be able to read this, it's so tiny, I can't right now. But it does match our district strategic goals, creating thriving social and emotional learning experiences for all students, and achieving academic excellence for all students. We have 12 ambassadors in the 5th grade, that's one per advisory. The 5th grade is a larger grade, so they have more ambassadors. In 6th grade, we have eight, and I have three of them here. I have one 5th grade ambassador with me. 7th grade, we have eight, in 8th grade, we have nine. Remember from September, all the teaching staff and powers are involved in this morning advisory. Everyone is involved in this advisory in the morning. When we first began, I gave them each this certificate, kindness, acceptance, inclusion. Those are the three words, and we talked about that in September, and we modeled that throughout the year, throughout the months. Myself, with their advisory teacher, we chose them to be ambassadors in September. And they will be ambassadors for the entire year, and then in January... Yes, we all can fit. I asked Alexandra, you probably need to come up front too. I asked each of them to choose someone in their advisory to come and bring on board with us. So we won't say goodbye to them, we'll just make our circle bigger in January, on kindness, acceptance, and inclusion, and that there's no Acushnet without you. This school doesn't exist without them. It doesn't. It's very quiet in the summer when you're not here. You know, in the summer when you were doing the bulletin boards, it was really quiet, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Our first meeting, I think this is with my 8th grade group. Is Jack in there, Jack?
Jack Silva.
Is that you? Jack Silva, yes.
Right back there.
Yes, you are, move. In the blue sweatshirt, yes. This is my 7th grade group. Sophia, are you there?
No.
Yes. Your any friends there? Yes. My 6th grade group, I have Jack, Emily, and Cheyenne, is this, everyone is there, or maybe this picture?
Yeah, I'm in the red sweatshirt.
Okay, excellent. And my 5th grade group, I think Alexandra is right next to me. And so we meet, we try to swap it up so that we don't meet every Friday, because we were meeting on Fridays, they missed their special, if it was bad, I don't want that to happen. So we are meeting throughout the day, though, it's not an after-school right now. So we have Alexandra with us, wave Alexandra. We have Jack.
Can't see you.
Oh, sorry. Jack T., and Cheyenne, and Emily, and Sophia, and Jack, in the 8th grade. So at this point, we can hear from you. So were you honored to be chosen, and why? Do you like to be involved in school? Do you like beginning your day with advisory? You can go if you think you know the answer, or you can share. Either one.
I like beginning the day with advisory, and...
Why do you think, why is advisory good in the morning?
It's good in the morning because the slide shows are fun, and I really like my advisory teachers.
Someone else want to share? Were you honored to be chosen, do you like to be involved in school, do you like beginning your day with advisory?
Go ahead. I was honored to be chosen because it shows that...
Jack, excuse me, can you just make sure you speak into the microphone?
We have to go closer to you.
Just want to get this.
I was honored to be chosen because it shows that my teachers see that I'm trying my best in school, and that it's working out, like my hard work.
Yes, nice. Emily? Okay, thank you.
I like advisory to start the morning because during advisory, it's just a wake-up call for your day. And also, it gives you like a hint about like what's for lunch and everything that you're going to be doing for the next week. And also, you get to like talk with people and get to greet people and play.
Thank you, Emily. Cheyenne, you want to share?
Thank you. I like advisory in the morning because it helps me wake up by greeting my peers and everybody in my advisory group, and it's just a good way to get to know everybody.
Thank you, Sophia.
I believe that it was an honor to be chosen, especially because this is my first year here. So it just really shows that if you have a good effort, you can just be noticed, and all your work will pay off.
Thank you, Sophia. Jack, 8th grader.
I was honored to be chosen because I am one of nine kids in the ambassadors, and to be one of nine out of like 100 kids, that's pretty incredible.
Thank you.
It is incredible.
It is incredible. I think my next slide is questions. Oh, no, we had a food drive in October with our costume event. Bulletin boards around the school, we're working on improving those. 7th and 8th grade, they're starting a sock drive tomorrow, 5th and 6th will start a pajama drive in November. Questions?
Can we have the first girl come back up next to the microphone?
Alexandra, yes. She can answer another question if you'd like.
How do you like advisory again? Because we didn't really hear your response.
I like advisory in the morning because the slide shows are really fun, and it's good to meet people in your class that you might not be able to talk to.
Yes. Do you have any questions for us?
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
It's quite an honor. Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sylvia.
Thank you.
And I do want to let the students know that I will be speaking with them soon. I love how professional they are in their meetings, and they are true leaders, and it is an honor. And I appreciate their adults tonight bringing them out for a meeting. This is important, this is the most important thing that we do, we're here for the kids. So I appreciate your time tonight, so thank you all so much again. And I will be scheduling a meeting to meet with the ambassadors very soon. We can do it in my conference room, okay?
We can make play a game of would you rather, we could do would you rather?
Whatever they want.
Mr. McIntyre participated the other day with the kids this morning.
All right, well, thanks for the heads up on that. Thank you.
Nice job.
Okay, thank you. And next, again, we're going to take something else out of order. I'd like to call the representatives up from PJ Keating. At this time, I'd like them to introduce themselves. They have a rather large donation for our school, and they're going to speak about that. And then when they are done, I would love to have the opportunity to take a picture with the school committee, and Patrick McIntyre, and myself. So we'll call them up to the podium. If you could introduce yourself and talk about the project, that would be great. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Sarah Fitzgerald with PJ Keating. I've been at PJ Keating for about 17 years now. This is the first time we've done an event like this, so I'm really excited to be able to do this for the town.
I'm Rick Pavo, I've been with Keating, I'm the area manager. I've been with Keating for about 20 years now, and also my first time, hopefully not last.
My name is Bill Donovan, I'm a vice president of commercial sales at PJ Keating. I'm the new guy, I've only been there three years, I've worked in the industry my entire life. This was quite a success story for us at PJ Keating as part of our celebration of 100 years of existence of PJ Keating. Right? Exactly. So I'll tell you how this all came about. With boss Derek Hill, who's president of PJ Keating, in midsummer, he came to me and Rick and Sarah and said, hey, let's hold a golf tournament. And I'll give you just a little bit of money. So we started out, we're like, all right, we don't have enough money to hold the golf tournament, so what are we going to do? We gathered the team together, we came up with some great ideas. Then Derek says, hey, let's pick a nonprofit to donate the money we're going to raise, right? We didn't even know if we had enough money to pay for the golf tournament. So we chose the Acushnet school system, right? Kids are the best, right? And they're our future, and you know, throughout PJ Keating, we really try to work with the communities, and a lot of what we do is support school systems. So we got some great sponsors, some great vendors that donated money. We had a great group of people come in and golf, and we didn't charge anybody to play golf. All our customers played for free. So it was a great event, we raised some money, all our customers had a great time. We had people from Hampshire, we had people from Mass, from Rhode Island, from Connecticut. We had sister companies come in under the CRH umbrella. And it was really a fun day, as Sarah, I think you can attest to. And we raised some money.
Yeah.
And you know what, having the kids here and doing their little presentation, we know we picked the right cause. I mean, that was moving, that was really awesome, unbelievable. And you know what, I mean, when we were picking a place, we were like, where do we invest it? You know, what's going to be most effective, obviously our kids. And what they did today, that takes a lot of guts to come up here, that little girl, Alexandra, she had me like, hello, right? It was amazing, they did a great job.
And so I don't think we actually said how much money we were able to raise and donate, which ended up being $26,565.
Would you like to talk about briefly what that money's going to go towards?
Yes, sorry, thank you.
And then just take a picture.
Yes, so we actually got with Patrick and Paul around maybe some suggestions. We had put together a few ideas and then got their input. And one of the items that came up was new bleachers for the elementary school, right? New bleachers were just put into the middle school, and they were looking for the bleachers for the elementary school. So we thought that would be a great cause that the money could go towards. Along with that, anything for like sporting equipment, gym equipment, things like that, or field trips. I think we're also acceptable kind of uses of the funds or additional funds, whatever's left over after the bleachers, or however it all plays out.
We need to print over a big check. I was very excited, I've never used one of the big checks. Can we get this? If you can come over here, the three of you. We just shake your hands, thank you very much.
Thanks for attending conference.
Yes.
So we'll just all gather around.
Okay. Who should pull the other side of the check, yeah. There we go.
There we go.
Yep, yep, come on, it will squeeze in. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we want, you want to go in here?
On three, say cheese. One, two, three! Doing a bunch of them. We'll Photoshop this later, don't worry.
Yes, thank you.
All right, you guys look good.
Oh, yes.
Would you mind one more time?
Absolutely.
If anyone want to, we'll take care of it right now.
Absolutely.
Do you want to take your jacket?
Oh, sure. Thank you.
I like the jacket.
He's leaving, he's like leaving.
One, two, three. Taking a bunch, all right, you're golden.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much. Thank you so much, we much appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
So for the people that are attending this meeting for the first time, this is very exciting. This doesn't always happen, it never happens, it's never...
This is a great meeting so far, right?
It's great, yeah.
All right. All right, let me continue then with my report. Oh, yep, we do have to vote, we do need a vote to accept the check. Okay, so we need a motion.
I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the donation of $26,565 from PJ Keating.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay, school committee protocols, that is in your packet tonight. And I just wanted to know if anybody had any suggested changes. If not, we can vote to adopt what we previously had, so...
Does anybody have any questions regarding them? It was just our VP here, what to expect? Any questions on that?
I may have one recommendation, very friendly amendment. For those of you that were at the town meeting last night. And I could have missed it, but I went through this. Could we just maybe have something in here that says that we will, paraphrasing, but attempt to... I think we should see things first before we vote on them, when possible. So meaning, if something requires a vote, hopefully, we've seen it, we've talked about it, we've discussed it, and the first time we're seeing it is not what we're also being asked to vote on. Especially on major, big-ticket items.
Yeah. So can we say that would be up to the chair to decide, or do you want it to come to the entire committee to decide? Like, for example, things like voting for this check, right? That's small, right? So would it be left up to the chair to decide what would be something that you would need a day?
Listen, that's fine, I just think it should be one of our governing operating principles that we try to do that. Again, it might not always be possible, but if I think about things like, we've talked about this before, superintendent goals, I think it'd be good to have a discussion, then we come back at a subsequent meeting and we approve them. If it's a big item like that, I think we should not see it for the first time and have to vote on it, when possible.
So if...
One solution that could be to that is that have the chair, you know, make a ruling, and then, but the ability of the membership to challenge the chair, and then goes to a vote of the full committee.
And anytime the committee can decide if we say votes may be taken, doesn't mean that it's written stone.
But he wants it part of our protocol, which, does anybody, do we have to make a motion to add this?
We can add it. Well, I think what we should do is, we can draft it, and I'll just send it out to make sure this is exactly what the committee wanted. Yeah.
And just to be clear, there are times things come up, we have to act urgently, we can deal with that. I'm just saying, when we have the opportunity to be planful, mindful, let's have a discussion, so we don't feel rushed, so it doesn't feel like committees being put on the spot to make a decision.
So we always, just to remind people, we always send the packet out by Friday, as much of it as we can, as you know, so that you have time to review the packet prior to the meeting on a Tuesday. But there are some things, I understand what Mr. Hood is saying, that, you know, as much notice as possible for certain other items, bigger items. So we'll draft that, we'll put that together for you, and then we'll put it again on the next agenda. This is something that the committee will have as guiding principles, you know, for the future, so it's not a rush.
And just so I'm clear, I'm not asking for this because I'm implying that this happens frequently. I'm just adding it as a best practice, way for us to operate.
It's a good idea, it's a great idea.
Years ago, a few years ago, it was past practice to do exactly what you suggested. So it's nothing...
So I appreciate the support of the committee.
Yeah, of course.
All right, so moving on, I'd like to call Mr. Missler up to the podium to give us a technology update.
Good evening, everyone, happy Tuesday. Great to see you all. Quick update from me. We went to, we had 11 of us that went to MasQ, it's a technology conference, one of the bigger ones that happened in New England. It was great, we had admin there, teachers, support staff, educational coaches. We went through a bunch of professional development workshops, it was phenomenal. We even won, the district won a cybersecurity workshop for phishing, which essentially means that the company's going to come out. And they do kind of really kind of neat show and tell of, to guess this phishing attempt, they show up emails, and you have to try and guess it, which is good for us in the district, just kind of make awareness of the bad people that are trying to gain your personal information. So it was kind of neat for us, out of everybody in that place, we won. For a date update, our EPIMS, which is our employee data that we submit to the state, is ready to roll up early. We had a meeting actually today with all the key partners that handle the data. And we kind of put in process and procedures in place. I haven't heard of it happening in this district before, but the goal is to kind of get all the key players to have a better understanding of our data, and how it works, and what happens when we submit to the state. It was great today. One of the things I mentioned in my last meeting was our efficiencies that we're putting in place, some of the things that we're doing to tackle that. For instance, we have Aspen's our student information system. Aesop is our attendance data system. Right now, we have a connection going from our Aspen system to our Aesop system, so that means less people putting in data. So that means someone doesn't have to type in the same name multiple times, they don't have to put in all this information. And with that, it means one point of issue. So if you make a mistake in Aspen, it simply just travels on, and you can fix it the same way. So long story short, much more efficient. And the goal of that is, we're going to try and do that with as many systems as possible. One other update, our fiber update, as we're doing our infrastructure rollout, we ran into a little bit of a snag that was unnoticed, but without getting too much into details, I'll get a little bit detailed for you guys so you have an understanding. There's two modes of fiber, you have a single mode and a multi-mode. Single mode can go long distance, multi-mode goes very short. Both have different connectors, right? They look similar, but different connectors. When connected to the AES building, we went from single mode to multi-mode to single mode. So the problem with that is that connector doesn't travel all the way through. So no matter what we did, we couldn't actually transfer data from one closet to the far closet over by the first grade wing, which is a problem for us with new infrastructure. So thankfully, we called the company in, they replaced the connectors, we got certified, it's up and running, everything's perfect now. We do have some more lines in the district that we'll take care of in a much later day, but we're perfect now. Outside of that, it's business as usual, you guys have any questions for us, anything we can help?
I think, Patrick, you had mentioned that we are putting together a new website down the road at some point this year, hoping, so that is good news, right, for everyone? And that'll be for the district as well as each school, or...
Yes, the goal with the new website, we haven't rolled out, all the key players in the district is working on that. And once it's finalized, we'll be showing it to the public, and it's going to have updated calendars, everything's going to be nice on it. You'll have all the new protocols, procedures, et cetera, everything that you want, and everything in-house will have proper procedures for as well.
So it's being worked on?
It's being worked on.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Missler. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
That wraps up the superintendent's report, and we're going to move on to the business manager's report. Mr. Patrick McIntyre.
Good evening, school committee. We'll get right to it. The fiscal '24 budget, again, on track. No news is good news with the budget, there's a few lines overspent within, you know, the categories that are applicable, that we don't need any sort of amendments to the budget, but everything looks good, you know, we're moving right along with that. We recently had a budget subcommittee meeting to plan for the fiscal '25 budget, and we're going to set up some meetings with finance committee and town administration to set expectations, to jump right into that and get that built out and moving forward. So if there's any specific questions on the budget, I can take those now.
You want an observation?
Sure.
When I looked at, you know, the expenditures and so forth, you have high school tuition. Could it be broken down into how much we pay to each high school, so we know? I still, you know, we haven't, of course, maybe early in the year to know how many students are going to each of them, and how would be, you know, how much we're expending for each one?
Yep, so that's, we can do that certainly. Your timing is perfect, we're just receiving our first wave of high school tuition bills. They're coming in now, a lot of them are based on the October 1 Sims numbers that our tech department presented on last meeting. So we receive those invoices and those student listings, we verify that they're residents in our town before paying their tuitions, but we can certainly break that out between our high schools.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, so jumping into facilities, as everyone knows, with the ongoing efforts at AES to, you know, deep clean that school and get it suitable to continue our teaching and learning over there, you know, our facility staff has been heads-on, overtime, extra time, you know, we've shared staff from this building to help work over there. And everyone's really just going the extra effort to make sure that everyone's safe and comfortable. And, you know, we just released some communications about the school closure coming up the week of Thanksgiving, and we're doing everything together as a central administration to make sure this is a seamless process. And it's obviously in the best interest of that elementary school and all those families, faculty and students involved, so...
Excuse me, I'm wondering if we can take a vote, an official vote in public session regarding the change in calendar? So what I would be looking for from the committee is an official vote in the change of the calendar, that the AES staff will be out for two and a half days, I believe it's November 20, 21, and 22. And those two and a half days will be tacked on to the end of the school year for AES staff. That is the change with the calendar, and I would just ask for an official vote on that.
So it's November, what were the dates again?
20, 21, and 22. 22 is a half day, but, so they would have to make up two and a half days.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to change the calendar year of 2023 to 2024 to have a day off for Acushnet Elementary School for staff and students on November 20th, 21st, and the partial day on the 22nd.
So move it.
And also to be made up at the end of the school year.
That's important, thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make, I'll move that motion.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please?
Did you want to say something?
I just want to say one thing, I think it's important for the public to know that remote days are not an option. The state will not allow remote days, so I wanted to just put that out there because some people are curious about that. So it's just, it's not an option.
The committee was too, as well, when discussing everything.
Right.
And Dr. Bailey, in the event that we had a significant amount of snow days, there are some options that you could potentially pursue to have a waiver?
Right, so, just so people understand, there's five days built into the calendar at the end of the school year for snow days. Hopefully, we don't have to utilize those. So right now, we would be looking at AES staff making up the two and a half days. Should we make up, say we have the full five days, um, I could petition the state for a waiver for the AES staff if it gets towards the end of June. Um, we're gonna have to wait and see how this works, but I would rather not even discuss taking days from February and April vacation. I just think it's easier to wait until the end of the year. People have plans, and, you know, quite honestly, they don't count these days unless we have a certain attendance rate. So, you know, I don't want to cut into people's vacations, and perhaps, let's see how it goes. Hopefully, we have a mild winter, and it's not gonna be an issue.
So I, I think that's good, and, you know, there's probably no, my perspective, there's no perfect solution to this, but I think I certainly felt like two and a half days was maybe the least invasive of the options and alternatives that we had, so I think this is a reasonable, uh, solution.
Absolutely. So let's move to a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Codera?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we are...
Well, still...
Good thing.
And just while on the topic, you know, a, a lot of people in the district involved in this decision, and, you know, the ongoing efforts have logged a lot of hours, um, a, a lot of effort, a lot of, you know, just communication, sort of on-call, if you will, and really, it's, it's been in everyone's best efforts to, to solve this problem. So I just wanna thank everyone publicly again for, um, you know, your help and, and faculty's patience and the family's patience as well. And on the topic, you know, as we're, you know, moving through these things and looking at our buildings and having these engineering firms and environmental firms in our buildings, um, it's been a good chance for us to talk about maintaining proper routine maintenance on, you know, different pieces of equipment, and just building spaces in general. So it, there's sort of been a, you know, um, a piece of that too, where we're, 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 we're learning and documenting and making sure that we're gonna stay on track of, you know, certain things moving forward to have, you know, the best environment for everybody. Moving on to food services, um, again, I, I'd just like to share data and try to show you a snapshot in time comparatively. Um, I've been comparing it to previous years, and based on the October twenty-twenty-three data versus the October twenty-twenty-two data, um, meal participation has increased seventy percent for school lunches, and for breakfast, it has increased six percent. Um, so again, that, that to us is telling us that our students are participating in, in, um, you know, our food services. They're, they're getting fed, they're getting energy to, to learn throughout the day, um, and staying focused. Within food services, again, we've updated you a couple of times on our inventory process. At this point, we've inventoried everything onto a spreadsheet. Um, we have many of the replacement costs to sort of build out a plan on replacing some of this equipment that has been in there since the school's been put in place. Um, and we are tagging items with asset ID tags now so that we can, you know, have accountability of every piece of equipment, um, in, in both cafeterias. Um, so we're ninety-five percent of the way there, uh, a few more costs to kind of dial in and map out, and then we'll take that and kind of build that out into our plan, um, to move forward with the spend-out of the food service funds. On a fun note, um, our food service director, Shelley, has a Thanksgiving dinner, lunch, if you will, planned for November sixteenth for students and faculty. And we're gonna take this opportunity to kind of dive into our first farm-to-school, um, you know, activity where we're gonna be purchasing cranberries and butternut squash locally from local farms. And, you know, that's gonna contribute, contribute to the meal, and we put a part of, you know, cranberry sauce and, um, butternut squash. So, um, we're excited for that, and, you know, it's gonna be a fun day, and, you know, we hope everyone participates in that meal.
I'll be serving.
Um, and then finally, to wrap it up, transportation. So again, um, I just wanna thank families and students involved. There's been road closures around the town due to ever-source projects that are ongoing, um, some that we haven't had all the information upfront to anticipate. But, um, you know, with last-minute efforts to sort of reorganize stops and have parents come pick up students, uh, we've, we've been able to get students, you know, home safely, um, with, with the families helped, and we appreciate their patience. And then, on the same note, you know, will we, this is the last year of our transportation contract. So, um, in a matter of months, we'll be going out to bid to look forward to our, um, transportation contract for the next three years. Any questions on facilities, food services, or transportation?
Um, with the generous donation from PJ Keating, when do we think that stuff will be purchased?
Um, so, we just voted to accept the funds, but, um, you know, in the past, we know we've quoted out the projects for the bleachers, um, and, and, you know, other related needs. We know what our field trip needs are, um, and we know the PTO helps us out with some of those. So we'll evaluate that and revisit what our quotes were from, you know, last May-June. We'll solicit, you know, three new quotes as accordance to procurement law, and we can get something on schedule hopefully as soon as, you know, one of our winter breaks or spring breaks to, to get going on that project. So, pretty quickly, I hope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
How long will that project take to be known roughly?
Um, so middle school bleacher project, maybe a week from start to finish. The problem is, they have to bring in everything and unpack it and kind of lay it out on the floor, and then we have to leave the gym as-is for a set period of time. So we don't wanna try to do it during the school day, um, and have them come in after hours to do it, so we'd rather plan around a vacation where no one's disrupted. Um, but yeah, we should probably be able to knock that out in a week or so.
Sometime soon.
Yep, before the end of the school year, I, I have confidence in that, if not, right at the end.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, moving on to school committee member reports. There is supposed to be a letter in our packet, I just can't find it. Do we know where it's under? It's for the exploration of potential regionalization study and high school tuition?
Where is it under?
Is it under super?
I did read it today.
You did read it?
Yes.
Oh, there we go. And Dr. Bailey suggested that I, I read this, or that they've already read it?
Right.
On their own?
I haven't, I didn't be able to cap in on that one, I was going through all the others.
So do you want me to just give background on what it's about? Um, because Mrs. Downing is not here today, she's actually traveling. But, um, the chairperson from the Fairhaven School Committee wrote a letter to Mrs. Downing, and this is Mrs. Downing's response, um, as the chairperson from Fairhaven was questioning the fact that our school committee was doing some exploration of regionalization as well as looking at other school districts to include in our tuition agreements. So, this, the Fairhaven School Committee wrote a letter to Mrs. Downing. The letter in your packet is Mrs. Downing's response, and what we need tonight is if everyone on the committee is in favor of sending this back to Fairhaven as the response, that vote needs to take place tonight.
Why don't I let Mr. Howcroft read that? And we are gonna go to the other communication that I have for parents. Um, this is a statement from the Akushnet School Committee regarding our air quality, which I think some people here are, are waiting to hear about. So I'm just gonna read it verbatim. So during the past few months, the leadership of the Akushnet Public Schools has attempted to address issues of mold at the Akushnet Elementary School. A matter of such, um, a matter such as mold can be upsetting and rightfully cause concern among students, parents, faculty, and staff. Superintendent Dr. Bailey has worked tirelessly, tirelessly to remove, to resolve this matter, taking numerous steps following consultations with experts. Ongoing testing continues to show that the air quality is well within normal ranges. As the elected board responsible for our district, we understand that no single decision or action is welcomed by all. We have seen during the past five years that Dr. Bailey always acts in the best interest of our students and stakeholders. She values community and staff input that is constructive and oriented towards solutions. Dr. Bailey's forward-thinking, inclusive, and student-centered approach has made her an outstanding leader who has brought positive change to our district. We thank Dr. Bailey and the staff for their diligence, and will continue to support their hard work in the coming months. So thank you, Dr. Bailey and your staff. In addition to that, we are planning a small-town meeting for parents to attend to ask any questions that they have regarding the air quality at the elementary school. We haven't found a location yet or an exact date, but it will be happening in the very near future, and communications will be sent out to all parents for them to, to attend and to discuss any concerns that they may have. So that is that information regarding that. Mr. Howcroft, are you okay with?
Yeah, I have, uh, I'd probably refer, uh, this, to, to our council. We have a, you know, signed agreements with both New Bedford and Fairhaven.
Mm-hmm.
If, are we put, breaking the spirit of those two agreements by going to another, uh, by looking, even exploring? Uh, we, we go, you know, are, are we really basically, uh, call it unfaithful bargaining? You know what I'm saying?
We have had counsel, we've, we've talked to counsel about this, and we were able to send this letter per, per their advisement. Um, and in my personal experience with the schools, I feel that our students in Akushnet deserve the best that's out there, and if some schools are not holding up their bargain, then we have the absolute ability to look elsewhere for our students.
But I thought it was, you know, because I think, I thought it was just, you know, when we did it, I says, you know, you know, Fairhaven, uh, we seem to have a good partnership, and they plan on, you know, they're... And maybe if we just look at some of the issues, explore.
Yep. So we've done that, we've, we've actually researched that, and right now, I personally feel with the research that I've done that looking at other schools is in the best interest of our students.
But I, I just wanna clarify.
Yeah.
What the school committee members are saying, um, the ones who have looked into this, is that they don't wanna break the agreement with Fairhaven. They're looking at potential other options for students in the district in choosing a high school.
In addition to Fairhaven to New Bedford.
And New Bedford.
So if a student wants to go to Fairhaven, they have the absolute right. However, if they're looking for certain criteria that Fairhaven or New Bedford doesn't have, they will have another opportunity.
I'm just, the question I have is, are you giving, say for example, Fairhaven decides, well, they're looking, they're breaking, uh, potentially breaking a, a agreement that we have, you know, they themselves say that they wanna no longer take...
We're not potentially breaking.
Okay.
It states clearly that if, if there are lack of resources, then we have the opportunity to look elsewhere for those resources. Which is what we're doing. Again, not taking away from New Bedford or Fairhaven, just adding another opportunity for our students.
I just, uh, I remember the days when Fairhaven was not accepting our kids, uh, as students. And also, there was on a quota system, I, uh, you know...
There were other opportunities now?
And I, and that was, it's like, you talk about turmoil among parents about, you know, going on to that. So I just wanted to avoid any type of disruptions in the future.
We're, we're working closely with legal, um, and with the research that we've done, I think another opportunity is, is needed.
Yes, I, we discussed that last time.
And I just wanna point out, you know, the letter talks about exploring the feasibility of adding another high school. Nothing is written in stone at this time. Um, I think we wanna be transparent with Fairhaven and New Bedford about what we're looking at. So I think this response that Mrs. Downing, um, you know, would like your support on is just to send back a response to their chair to say, here, these are the things we're talking about, these are the things we're concerned about, um, we would like to meet with you so that we can have full transparency.
Yep, that's commendable, I, I have no problems with that.
Correct. Yep, everything's still...
Nothing will change, we'll just add another school.
Correct.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the letter by Jennifer Downing, our chairperson, for the exploration and potential regionalization study and high school tuitions to other districts.
So with that vote, that letter will be sent to Fairhaven?
Correct, sent.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We can do all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously to send that letter out? So there are other communications and information in your packets. I'm sure you viewed them already on Friday or this weekend. Any questions about those letters or documentation? No? Okay, so we are going to move to, we're gonna have executive session to discuss the following, as it would be detrimental to hold discussion in open session, as so the vice chair declares. So we will be discussing the pursuant of GLC thirty-A twenty-one-A three to discuss strategy with respect to litigation specifically in the matter of Amorall Bus Company versus Akushnet Public Schools. Docket number two-two-seven-three-C-V-zero-zero-zero-one-two, votes may be taken. Also, the discussion to, to, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect here to safety and security of staff and students. Votes also may be taken. We will not be returning to open session. The next regular school committee meeting will be held at the John Tavares Library and the Ford Middle School on Tuesday, December fifth, two thousand twenty-three, at five-thirty PM. Do I have a motion to close this open meeting and go into executive session?
So move, yeah.
Do I have a second? Second. Roll call, please?
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Codera?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.
Motion passes, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.